Yeah, it was kinda interesting in the same paragraph.
All right, at this time, I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 13th Planning Commission meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is roll call. Pitt here, McCusker.
Yes.
Bauer, he's absent. Price.
Here.
Longton.
Here.
Hemma, he's absent. And Duden.
Here.
That brings us to number three, which is the approval of the agenda. I've got a motion by Mr. McCusker and a second by Price and Duden, actually. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number four, which is approval of the minutes for October 8th, 2012.
Well, I got one little change for that. I was here.
Yeah, yeah. Price, he's got some seconds in here. I know he was about 10 minutes late, but, so he was here, but that was the only thing that I noticed. And that brings us to number five, which is public input. Oh, wait, we didn't vote on that, did we?
We'll make that correction and then get a vote for that, please.
All right. I've got a motion by Mr. McCusker and a second by Price. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number five, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Any public here for something other than the comprehensive plan rezoning? Seeing one, we will move on to the public hearing for the evening, which is the amended comprehensive plan rezoning property to hospital campus PUD.
I believe both, I believe both individuals in the audience tonight are here for the public hearing on the matter that I'll be presenting in a moment. So, in the event you do speak, we will ask that you sign in here. Little bit of background for the public hearing tonight for the commission and public. Probably recall, maybe Bill, I guess that's maybe, okay, we can see that. I was gonna say, we might want to dim the lights a little bit. Yeah, let's, let's try that, so we can see that better. Thank you. About a year ago now, as we've discussed this year, the city council, thank you, the city council passed an ordinance which established a development moratorium for the areas in gold, blue, and green in the south Highway 52 corridor. And some of the reasons why the council had established that at that time was, number one is, as we all know, Minnesota Department of Transportation has and continues to work on plans for major changes to Highway 52. We wanted a little bit of time to understand what those changes might mean in terms of existing land use and development along this particular area. In addition to the highway department project, we were interested in knowing a little bit more about growth plans of the city. As you can see by the large drawing on the back of the room that you've looked at before, the Highway 52 Improvement Plan also includes some fairly significant, what I'll call secondary roads outside of the planning area, both on the east and west side of, of the area that's subject to our moratorium. We want a little bit more information about not only just the roads and the placement of those roads and how they're gonna access the community in the Highway 52 improvements, but also we want to know as a city what the impact or considerations of Cannon Falls Township might be. And we've been able to learn a lot more about their interests over the course of the last several months. We're also interested in learning more about what's it gonna take, if anything, for extensions or expansions of our sewer water system that already exists out in the south 52 corridor. And we've learned a lot more about, about the utilities and the possibilities of extending them. We wanted to learn more about the proposed hospital project, which is located in this area, under the moratorium area. And you all heard in the last several months, and we've heard a lot in this past year, about the plans for the hospital, to the point of where the plans are getting more and more specific, it seems, by the week, in terms of what the project will look like, specifically where it's gonna be located on the site, and when it's gonna be built within that moratorium area. So, we wanted to learn a lot more about the hospital as well. And so, for those reasons and some others, the council really decided at our recommendation that we establish the moratorium, again, about a year ago, for this particular area. What the moratorium allowed us to do, then, is, is look at these issues, learn more about these issues, try to investigate and research some answers to these issues, to come up with a plan and a recommendation, not just for areas within the moratorium area, but also to be able to end or terminate the moratorium by the end of this year. In order to do that, we needed to hold a public hearing, and that's the reason for the hearing tonight. We've published in the Beacon notification of the public hearing, and we've also notified by mail notice, property owners within 350 feet of the area that we'll be talking about in more detail tonight. That is the study area, which is a portion, only a portion, of the moratorium area. But as we move forward, our recommendation of staff is that if we adopt the proposed recommendations for this hospital campus area that I'll talk about in a minute, if we adopt those recommendations, that by virtue of adopting those recommendations, the council would be asked to also terminate the moratorium at the end of the year. It's not gonna end all of our various planning issues that, that are gonna impact this whole Highway 52 corridor, but it's gonna allow us to move forward to end the, the moratorium period and move forward with a specific plan for at least a, a part of the area shown in the, on the graphic on the map. Little bit of quick background, I'm guessing maybe none of us were here in 2003, we may, may have been here, but not in that position, or me in my position. But when the comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan was drafted in November, approved in November of 2003, this is the area kind of in that south corridor, which is now, much of which is on, under the current moratorium. What we'll be talking about tonight is, is the area shown in blue down in this area, which is now the, the hospital site, as well as a smaller area here, about eight acres, which is shown in red, which is highway commercial. So, as we've gone through this planning process in the last several months, we've kinda concentrated our, our areas and our focus for tonight's public hearing, two areas in and around the blue, which is a public use designation in the 2003 comprehensive plan, and this area in red, which is a highway commercial designation area in the 2003 comprehensive plan. So, we have referred to the existing plan as we've gone through this process. As I've talked about the hospital, I think you've all probably seen various renderings of the proposed hospital project, but I'll use some of their graphics to further explain this. And I'll give you an orientation on, on a different map, but this is basically an aerial view now to represent the proposed hospital development itself. And as I said, we're learning more and more about this project in a detailed fashion, literally each and every week that goes by, it seems. To, area over here is the area where the new southeast collector will be built by Goodyear County. That will provide access into the hospital site. And over this area to the west is, is the Highway 52 corridor. So, again, west to the left, east to the right, access into the parking areas, into the hospital, coming off of the proposed collector road. So, that's, that seems to be the, the evolving site plan for the development of the hospital itself. A view of the hospital, looking from Highway 52 to the east, that is, to the west side of the building, we're beginning to see renderings, beginning to see some fairly detailed perspective elevation drawings of what this hospital is going to look like on the site that the hospital owns. And we factored a lot of what's happening with the hospital development into our recommendation tonight for the hospital campus plan unit development zoning. But I wanted to give you kind of a, a sense, as, as we're getting more and more details from the hospital, why we've had some of the thoughts that we've had as staff to come up with a recommendation tonight on the, the hospital campus PUD. It's gonna be a very attractive multi-story building on that site. Give you one more look here. Kinda looking from the air southwest to the north of the building. Again, up in this area is where the access from the new southeast collector would come, and this, again, being the, the west, the west front of the site. So, you can see elevation changes on this site. Obviously, there's some topography out in that area, and that, again, is another item that we factored into our recommendations for this hospital campus PUD. So, we're seeing a lot more details for the hospital itself, and we're continually working with them on that. One of the other issues that we've, we've discussed and you're aware of is with the Highway 52 project, class act, which is a sexually oriented business, is going to be purchased by the state of Minnesota and relocated. And under law, state and federal law, they have the right to relocate somewhere within a community. I don't know at this point where they might choose to locate or not. We don't know that. They haven't been purchased yet. But one of the things that we wanted to do in our, in our moratorium and planning study is to look at different alternative locations for that use in the event they choose to relocate in Cannon Falls following acquisition by the highway department. So, you've seen in the packet of information that I provided to you, some information that talks about that, but clearly that is part of our planning analysis and consideration. We've also referenced, by having copied, I could, reference to planning reports that was, was done by other consultants that were adopting or proposing to adopt in our study, which deals with sexually oriented uses and their compatibility with other traditional land uses, or their lack of compatibility with other traditional land uses. So, again, you're welcome at your leisure to take a look at these, but this is considerable documentation that we would adopt as part of our process and findings to support the recommendations that we're making on the hospital campus PUD. So, we have factored that into our, our consideration as well. Sorry, Bill. Wait till I gets back there. What I'm gonna refer to next, assuming it comes up, is really the, the, I guess, the meat of our proposal here for ending the moratorium. I'm not sure why that's...
Well, there you go.
Ah ha. What I really wanted to do with the planning commission tonight, following all that background information, is really discuss with you the proposal that staff has to not only allow us to, to move beyond the moratorium, but provide us with some specific land use planning and zoning thoughts for the area in and around the proposed hospital site. Within your packet, I've included this exact exhibit that you see on, on the screen. Again, here's Highway 52 along the west end of the property in gold. Along the east end is where the new southeast collector, the bypass road, if you will, coming off the new interchange and then heading to the north and east up to County 25 would exist. The property that the hospital owns is about 37 or 38 acres right here. They also own property that's currently not within the city, immediately to the west, which is about, excuse me, to the east, which is about 14 acres that they would propose to annex and make part of the hospital site. So, the plan that I showed you earlier, the hospital building itself would be sitting more or less in this location. So, that's where they would propose to build. We have three other properties that are included within the recommendation here. Grandpa's garage located here, a vacant lot that's currently used by the John Deere dealership for storage of, of inventory and tractors, and then property owned by Randy Retzickel here, which has several uses within an existing building that is leased back to those tenants. And Mr. Retzickel is here this evening. What we're proposing within this area shown in gold are a couple of things. With regards to the comprehensive plan, as I showed you on the earlier map, that's currently identified as a public land use area, at least in here, and then highway commercial here. If we're gonna make this change, the recommendation would be to change the hospital public use designation in the comp plan and the highway commercial designation for these properties in the comp plan to hospital campus land use. And the hospital campus land use would allow then and, and guide for the development of these properties for medical uses, complimentary office, research and development type facilities, and multiple, multiple family residential development. So, it's a change in land use proposed in the comprehensive plan. To enforce that, then, through our zoning, the recommendation is if that change is made in the comprehensive plan, that this area also be zoned to hu- hospital campus plan unit development. We don't have a hospital campus plan unit development in our zoning ordinance today. But what's proposed here is that would then allow the hospital to come in and develop their 38 acres here, along with this acreage, assuming it will be annexed at some point, that they could develop that under the planned unit development zoning. It will work for what they're proposing to do at this stage, and it will work for projects that may occur beyond this stage, that is, beyond the hospital for them. And they would come before us for a conditional use permit. So, in order for the hospital to build the plan that I showed you a few moments ago, they would need to make application under this new zoning for a conditional use permit under the planned unit development process. Currently in the B2 zone, which is its current zoning, they would also need a conditional use permit. So, current zoning or the proposed future zoning, essentially, it's the same for them. They have no objection to that at this point. I have spoken with one of the three property owners. Each one of the three has received notification of this public hearing. I have spoken to one of the three property owners who is here tonight, Randy Retzickel, about this, and hopefully explained to his satisfaction, at least, what it means if this process does go forward with the recommendation that, that staff are making. If Randy has any questions, comments, he'll be given the opportunity to make those in a few minutes. So...
The other two landowners?
Steve, Steve Bauer owns the, the vacant lot under, under countryside, pardon?
Where the tractor sits?
Yes, yes. And then Kurt Lukie owns the, the grandpa's garage.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And then Randy Retzickel, the others. So, there's hospital-owned property, and then three privately-owned properties that under this recommendation would fall underneath this planned unit development concept that, that I'm speaking about.
So, before you get so carried away, why, why aren't we annexed and the whole package? Why aren't we leaving that back strip?
This?
Yeah.
This, this will be annexed, Leroy. We, we've met again with the hospital as recently as last week. They need and, and will proceed now with communication with Cannon Falls Township to petition for the annexation of that 14 acres. In the event it is annexed to the city, which I'm presuming that it will be, then, if we go ahead with this recommendation, that area here would also hold the hospital campus PUD designation. So, it would be the same.
And how many total acres that makes the hospital's got then?
Hospital's got about 51 total between the area in gold and this acreage here. About 51 total. So, of the whole 60, let's say roughly nine acres is comprised of those three privately-owned properties, and then the 51 acres will be controlled by the, by the hospital.
All right.
One, nope. One final point, then I'll turn it over to, to public and questions. With regards to the sexually oriented uses, you'll see both in the proposed language for the hospital campus amendment to the comprehensive plan, that those uses would not be allowed in this area. And you also see in the hospital campus plan unit development zone, that that use would not be allowed in this particular area. And again, the support for that is, is pretty much found in these documents, that that particular use is not going to be a compatible use, certainly for the hospital and/or for other similar type developments that could occur in the future around the hospital. It just is not gonna be a compatible use. So, the recommendation would include the exclusion of that use, both in the comprehensive plan, as well as in the, in the zoning ordinance. So, they would not be allowed to develop there. The question will become, then, outside of the public hearing tonight, is what opportunities will they have under our current zoning to locate elsewhere in Cannon Falls? I will tell you that our, our B2 zoning district... Our B2 zoning district, which again is primarily the area in gold here, excluding this acreage here that we've just spoken about, the zoning ordinance would allow a use of that type to relocate within that area. The zoning would also allow that use to relocate within the B1 downtown district. However, there are statutory setbacks for a use of that type from churches and schools, and effectively, that's going to not allow that use to relocate within the existing downtown area. But technically, the zoning ordinance would allow that. So, well, the hospital campus plan unit development will exclude that use from locating here. Other areas within the community may allow that use to develop. That use would also have to be licensed by the city. So, we have a use of this type in the community now. They are being acquired by the state of Minnesota. They may or may not choose to locate in Cannon Falls. I have no knowledge either way. But should they choose to locate in or in close proximity to the hospital, what we're talking about tonight would not allow them to do that. And we believe, at least at a staff level, that that's, that's a good idea. So, again, the public hearing tonight is to accept input from the public with regards to the proposed change of the comprehensive plan, creating a hospital campus land use, and the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance, which would adopt a new hospital campus plan unit development zone, specifically applied to the areas shown on, on this map. With that, I'll stop.
I'd like to ask a question. I, I think I understand this, but I'm not sure. What happens to those three properties?
Okay. Good question. In the event that this recommendation goes forward, those three properties, along with the hospital property that is located in the city right now, would be rezoned to the hospital campus plan unit development. Okay?
And they have no grandfather rights?
With respect to the existing uses, the three property owners that have existing uses on the sites now would continue to exist as, under a grandfather clause or as a nonconforming, illegal, noncon, illegal, nonconforming use. So, as long as the existing properties continue to be used as they are today, or at the time when the rezoning were to occur, they can continue indefinitely. There will be no zoning violations with respect to existing uses. In the event, in the future, one or more of the property owners wishes to change the existing use, if they didn't change them in accordance with what we're talking about here, they would either A, not be allowed to do it, or B, they would have to come in and request an amendment to the hospital campus PUD zoning to allow them to develop whatever they're proposing at that time. So, nothing will change with regards to existing uses. They'll continue to be legal, nonconforming, no harm, no foul. In the future, if there is a change, they either need to develop in accordance with what we might adopt here if we adopt it, or they would need to amend, come in and seek an amendment to the hospital campus PUD.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Good question.
What, what's their current process, then, for changing a use? So, see where it's, they get a different building, and now there's some free space. In the, in the current zoning situation that they have, what's their process? It's pretty wide open, then?
Well, right now, with the B2 zoning district that was adopted in 2006, there's quite an extensive list of permitted commercial uses up and down Highway 52 in the B2 area. So, many, many uses, commercial, highway commercial uses are allowed under current B2 zoning. Those uses may or may not be allowed in the future.
With the...
If we go this direction.
Right.
For the hospital campus PUD. Yep.
I think, you know, looking at this from Randy's standpoint and Kurt's standpoint is, basically, the hospital controls what they can do out there, though.
City will control what they can and can't do, even under, under the new proposed zoning. The hospital...
The hospital, I mean, first of all, this is kind of a little bit of a joke. Basically, what they're saying they don't want in class act in there is what they, they don't want. So, I assume they're having some kind of a say over what goes in there. I guess, just, just thinking about this, on one hand, I sit here and look at it, I, I don't know why, it's a hospital, wants that kind of control, they didn't buy the whole corner and everything. On the other hand, I'm really happy to dent, because then we don't get the taxes off. We get buildings that are paying tax. So, but, I guess, the way I'm listening to you, it would have to meet the, the hospital conditions for them to sell or do something.
No. Let me, let me clarify that, 'cause... Discuss different titles for this zoning district. The hospital campus PUD is a zoning district, just like the R1 single-family residential district, just like the B1 central business district. It's nothing other than another zoning control, another zoning district. It seemed like, at least to us, and we looked at all sorts of different possible titles, but it seemed to us that because the hospital use is going to be a predominant development within this area, that the hospital campus would maybe draw attention and, and easy recognition of where that is in the community. That's why we called it that. It could have been medical campus plan unit development. It could have been corporate center district. It could have been named virtually anything. But the important thing to clarify, and it's a good question, is it's the hospital campus plan unit development, but it's the city that will regulate the district, not the hospital, not Mayo, not the property owners. It's the city of Cannon Falls, just like any other zoning district. So, the hospital will have to come in for, for a permit, going through a public hearing with the planning commission, recommendation to the city council, and determination by the council. So, the hospital has to come in, or Mayo has to come in. If Randy Retzickel owns the property and he wants to change, he would have to come in. If Steve Bauer wanted a change on his property, he would have to come in, but it's the city who's making the decision. The hospital wouldn't have anything to, to, to say in terms of controlling what does or doesn't happen. They, like any other adjoining property owner, could come in. If one of these three private owners came in and said, "We want a permit to build a dental office and an eye clinic," they could do that under the hospital campus PUD. It would be a public hearing before the planning commission. The hospital or someone at Mayo could come in, just as these two property owners did tonight, and could come in and say, "Well, we support that, or we object to that, or we've got questions about that," but they don't make the decision. So, even though it's titled hospital campus PUD, the hospital is not making the determinations, and they need to come in through the same process. Thanks for making me, allowing me to make that clarification, 'cause that is an important one.
What does converting that property do for us? Just give us the exclusion, that way they don't end up with class act right next door?
That's, that's clearly one of the, one of the outcomes here, Dan. But I think, you know, the more I looked into this moratorium, and the more I've looked at the alternatives, and the more that I looked at, at, at this particular property, the more it seemed to me that this is a, a reasonable way to not just move beyond the moratorium, but I think it's a reasonable way to address this property. This property, and, and we'll all see this in 2013, this neighborhood is gonna change substantially, and it's not just because of the hospital. It's because of the interchange and that southeast collector. There's quite a bit of topography out there, there's existing development, but there's gonna be substantial changes to this neighborhood. And the more I looked at it, the more I felt that it, it's almost a little island onto itself, and when you're talking about getting a development of this magnitude as the first development in, I think it creates some, some market opportunities for some other things that could come in and follow that would be compatible. I think it, it creates some opportunity for high-value development to occur in this area, or certainly higher value than, than may exist today. And I think with the size of the property, not just, you know, the 38 acres or so that's in the city right now that, that the hospital owns, but also, you know, the eight-plus acres of, of those three, that's a fairly sizable piece of real estate, and it's in a very predominant location in this community. Clearly, it's accessible by 52, but it's very visible. So, when this gets built, and the interchange gets built, and that southeast collector gets built by, by Goodyear County on the east side of the site and the south side of the site, that's gonna be a major change out there. And I think this creates some interesting opportunities, at least in my view, beyond sexually oriented uses and beyond, you know, anything else that we've spoken about. I think this creates kind of an interesting opportunity for development, in my view. I think this creates kind of an interesting opportunity for development, in my view.
I, I have a couple of questions. As far as, say, Randy or Bowers or Mr. Lukey, they sell this, and the new owner of the property wants to come in, can they continue the same use? Or are they strictly governed as the new use because they're a new owner coming in?
Two ways to handle that. If, if, and we'll use Randy since he's here. I'll use him as an example. If he's got just under four acres, let's say, a couple of buildings and just under four acres. If he sold that land to you tomorrow, the next day, you could come in and we'd sit down and talk about that, and you could continue to have those existing tenants within your new building on your newly purchased property. Not gonna change. Second thing is, if, if you bought it tomorrow and you said, "I want these tenants out of these buildings. I bought this because I want the land and I want vacant buildings, and I don't care about the rents." And you evicted the existing tenants, and a year and a day from that point, you came back into me and said, "You know what? I'd like to have the uses that I used to have in the building I bought from Randy, come back in and occupy this space." That may not be possi- it may not be possible. Because we have a, a, a provision in our, in our non-conforming use law right now, and I don't know that that's even gonna change when we write our new ordinance. It's a fairly standard provision that says you can kind of keep your grandfather rights for a year, but if that property sits vacant for a year, you lose them. It doesn't go on forever. So technically, that would be the situation. If, if you did anything within a year of your purchase, it's no harm, no foul. That can go on for as long as you want it as the new owner. But if you vacate those buildings and you wanna bring something back in that doesn't conform to the ordinance now or this change, you're gonna lose that, that grandfather clause after the year.
Okay, so if somebody wanted to come in and buy Lukey's building and put a restaurant in there right now, that'd still fly, right?
Well, we'd have to look at the one-year period, I, yeah, on that situation.
And then as far as hospital campus, couldn't that be more towards a professional campus? Or professional buildings to maybe like storefronts for attorneys, professional-type people? Eye clinic, dental, stuff like that?
Actually, if you-
Target it, so-
If you look through-
Public opposition off of, you know, cause right away, as soon as this hits the social media out there of Cannon Falls, it's gonna be, "Oh, the hospital's getting whatever they want."
Yeah, I, I will certainly yield to your judgment on a name, because what's in a name? A lot. And again, we did wrestle with a couple of different potential names, and we looked at other, other ordinances and, and different communities handle these things in different ways. If the planning commission wants to make a suggestion for a new name for the district, I have no particular, depending on the name, I have no problem with that.
I guess, my thought is, I'd like to see it encompass other professional people other than just hospitals. We can only have one hospital out there.
Right.
Maybe we want eye clinics or attorneys, or maybe somebody that's got a storefront downtown would like to have a new building out there so they could have an antique shop in the historic district of town, or-
Yep. Those other, those other uses will be allowed as allowable uses within the hospital campus plan unit development. So we have included those within the overall definition of the district. It's just that, that the title of the district, if there's a concern that it's hospital-only, which I certainly understand, uh, we should maybe consider making some suggested changes to that. But the uses would allow the, the offices, the eye clinics, the dental facilities, uh, medical research and development. We've talked about high-density residential development as well, uh, as being allowed, so-
Like twin, or something like we have over here, that would be considered doable under the same-
Yep, yep.
Yeah, primarily, it looked like they were hoping for maybe more upscale neighbors. I don't think they'd, they'd be opposed to the, the big machine buildings being tore down and something prettier being put up. Actually, when I read it, that's kind of how I read it.
Yeah, I, and I've spoken with at least Randy about this too, that, you know, with the, the topographic changes out there and the fact that, you know, the, the existing buildings, one of the three properties is vacant. It simply serves as a, as, as an area for product from, from John Deere, but it's an undeveloped piece of property. Randy's property is, what, three-point-eight acres or something like that with a couple of buildings? And, and they're, you know, they're good buildings, but they're not probably gonna be there forever. And Grandpa's Garage has been vacant for some time, and it's a metal building of certain quality and, you know, may or may not change. And that's almost a three-acre site, I think. So, so again, to, to have uses and buildings developed there that complement or, and are compatible with the hospital facility, I think creates some, some interesting opportunities. And I, as I mentioned to Randy, I just said, I, I mean, my goal is not to be an obstructionist with land use zoning and planning. My goal is to try to direct and gear and hopefully encourage development that's compatible and, and in a site like this, uh, that fits the topography. I think there's some really interesting opportunities there, given the varying elevations of, of that site. And to have in your backyard, at least in this case, from, from Randy's perspective, to have in your background, backyard, uh, the Mayo Hospital is, I think, creates some, some, some value. I really do. And I think over time, there's probably a reasonable probability that as the community continues to develop, that maybe a higher and greater land use can be developed out there, or one, or maybe all three of those properties. I don't really think it hurts them as long as they have the, the non-conforming provisions, where we're not saying, "Okay, tomorrow, if you don't comply, so get out." We're not doing that. And like I said, I just think that as, as I sit and, and listen and learn and watch and hear and see what's going on out in that corridor with the highway and the interchange and Goodyear County's Collector Road and the hospital, um, there's gonna be some pretty eye-opening, uh, comments, I think, when, when those developments start. It's really gonna change that, that part of this community in a big way. I don't think necessarily in a bad way, but it's gonna change in a big way.
So why are we including these three in on this?
Yep.
Is it cause you want that control, because you wanna control what goes there? I don't, I, I don't know why you don't just do the hospital thing. Why include these three?
Yeah. Um, I, I wouldn't use the, the word "control," Leroy. I would say that when, when I looked at this area with, with three-eighteenth on the north, you know, the, the, the existing and the new frontage road, uh, that will be extended on, on the west side, um, and then, of course, the major southeast collector on the east side, this property seems to be bordered fairly well, and it's fairly confined. But yet, it's a fairly large piece of property. And I just think that, that to include those three properties into this broader vision makes good sense from my standpoint in planning and development. And I think it ultimately makes some good sense for the property owners to consider coming along with us on that. If, if it was separated property, or segregated property, or parcels that weren't contiguous, you know, I, I didn't include anything else in here, because the more I looked at the physical lay of the land, the more it occurred to me that, that these things kind of fit together, and that's why I included them in there. If, if I really thought that what we were doing here was gonna substantially or negatively affect the land values or the development opportunities for those three properties, I would have hesitated to, to bring them in. But I, I just feel that the, the more I've looked at this, Leroy, it just fits.
Well, I'm trying to sit here and think of this from the three property owners.
Yep.
Yeah. You know, on one hand, I sit here and list you, and I, I realize, realize that it should increase property value. On the other hand, I sit here and, and unless it's the right thing, maybe it isn't gonna increase the property value. So I think it could go either way for him and the three out there. Uh, I, I just, I mean, on one hand, uh, he's got the hospital there. Uh, yeah, if somebody wants to come in with an I twenty, you're gonna say, "Yeah, let's, let's get it going." On the other hand, if, uh, some Ford dealership comes in here and decides to want to buy, buy all that, put it in a Ford dealership, now you're probably not gonna allow that.
Correct.
So, are we doing the right thing, or aren't we? I, I, I think that's a hard question here. I don't think it's as simple as that.
Yeah.
And once we put them in this, uh, then we're determining that it has to be some kind of a medical-type thing or tie-in or something.
Well, I, I don't agree that it has to become a medical thing. And I think that if you look at it from the point of view that you're saying if you left this out of it, the value has the same, it could be this, or it could be that. Whether, whether it becomes part of this, um, PUD, um, campus, you know, if they stay out of the campus, their value is gonna be determined by what's going on around them as well. So, you know, I, I don't see that just determining them as this PUD is gonna make the call as to what's gonna happen with the value of that land.
And that's, and, and we'll have the philosophical discussions too, I'm sure, on, on just what zoning is and what zoning isn't. And, and forgetting about the, the hospital campus PUD, or whatever we're gonna call it, um, all of our zoning ordinances are designed to, to regulate what people can or can't do with their properties. That's just the way it is. And we hope through zoning that we can kind of organize and, and maybe encourage development that is compatible with, uh, existing neighboring properties, that protects property values of not just you as an owner, but your neighbors as well, and that's really the purpose of, of zoning. All land should not be, in my view, uh, on the development side at least, not all land should be allowed to develop anything and everything that a property owner might choose to develop on it. I, I really believe that, because all land is a little bit different for a variety of reasons. So philosophically, I would say that, you know, while we don't know the future on this piece or any other piece up and down the fifty-two corridor, your point of, of a car dealership, yeah, that's not gonna be allowed under this zoning as it's proposed. My view would be it, it shouldn't be allowed under this zoning as it's proposed. If we really want, again, in this example, a, a car dealer to locate in the, in the Cannon Falls area, I think there's plenty of opportunities up and down Highway fifty-two if that's where we want them. And I'm guessing that's probably where we do want that kind of use. There are other opportunities within the, the B two, uh, Highway fifty-two corridor that could allow that to happen.
So what you'd like to see then is this whole orange area, uh, basically from the overpass, the road coming off the overpass north, in this orange area, you'd like to see all this be medically connected somehow.
Just, just this area here. You're probably not gonna see it that way. Bill, I might need the, sorry about that.
I don't think we're saying that it has to be medically connected. We're wanting more of a professional type of clientele in there. Not, just because the hospital's there doesn't mean, I mean, you could have a big attorney firm come and move in there, or, um-
I would agree with, with Dave.
Or Edina Realty could come in there and put a professional building in, or a, a bank wanna, a bank could build, come in. TCF could come in and put a four-story building in there and officer people or something, but-
I think Roxanne wants to speak.
I agree, cause the hospital-
I think, I think we, we, we need to have it as more of a professional-type business area and not delegate it to strictly a healthcare, cause I, you're restricting your options way too much when, when you focus in on just the hospital. And that, where the Mayo has the one down in Phoenix, they have quite a few different businesses around the actual hospital that's there. Plus, I believe back in the back north corner of it, they do have some facilities where people that are at the hospital, they can actually have relatives can stay there, and they have some, some other lower-care-type facilities there at that site. And I think that's more what we're targeting this for, is more of a professional type, so we don't get the hodgepodge like we have across the road over here, where you got single-family next to the molting place. And that's one of the reasons in, when you do your planning and zoning, is you take a large chunk and try to get it where you can have all the grain mills in one spot or, and not scattered out next to your residential housing and stuff. That's, that's part of the idea on this, and-
I'd like to hear from Randy. Uh, have you and him been meeting on this? How about, how about you and Kurt?
I, I haven't heard from those two, Leroy, but I have, yeah. But I have, I have spoken with Randy on a couple of occasions.
Yeah, how about to the mic, Randy, and give us your input. We need that.
I mean, I'm not a, a, opposed to really what they're doing. I guess the only concern I would have is if it's gonna be a professional building, they're not, like one of you said, you know, they're, they're not gonna want the buildings that I got there. They're gonna wanna tear them down. So are they gonna be willing to pay what it's, what the buildings are, are worth for three-point-eight-four acres of land, cause they're just gonna tear them down anyways? And that's really my only concern. Um, I collect about eight thousand a month out of those buildings in rent right now. And I have talked to some other people, uh, well, you know, when they were talking about buying my property, we kind of come up with a, an, a figure of what we thought it was worth at the time. And they're not gonna wanna pay that for bare land, plus the cost of tearing the buildings down. So that, that's really my only concern. I can agree that if it's a hospital campus or a professional campus, I think the buildings do not fit with what they're doing up above. I agree with that. It's just that I wanna at least be paid fair market value and be assured that I can get that. Because there's a trucking outfit that has six, seven trucks sitting there. I mean, as you know, Seawards are there. Um, my biggest concern, like I have a ten thousand square feet to Thousand Hills Cattle Company. And if they decide to move out, you know, who can I put in there? I know he says it doesn't change, but can I put retail in there again, because that's under the B two zoning? I've had Ace Hardware call me and ask about renting the building for a hardware store and getting out of the mall. Would I be able to do that?
Yeah, that's, that's my concern. The other thing is, my concern is if your buildings are basically pole sheds back there.
Well, the one is, and the one's a stud wall building. It's a foundation building, but it's metal siding.
But if we had somebody come in and, and, uh, wanted to bower where the parking lot is for the tractors and stuff, and put up, uh, like Dave says, a professional building, something more brick, more modern, more fits a new development thing, um, you can't tell me that there won't be pressure if there's a new building at Grandpa's Garage in there to get rid of the old pole buildings in the back. Uh, I think that'll go with this. I, I, you know, I wish it would, but it seems like that's what goes with it. So if we, if we pass this and put them three under that same umbrella, I think we are putting some pressure on them. Uh, and like he says, a person that's gonna come in there and buy his building now and wants to put a welding shop in there, uh, can do that today, isn't gonna be able to do that under this. Um, so I, I think there's some effect here. I, I don't know, just make-
Even like with Kurt's building, it's been sitting vacant. He can't sell it for a banquet facility anymore because it's been sitting vacant for a year under this new ordinance. It can't be anything, there's nothing to say about restaurants or anything like that. It has to be professional building. I mean, you may wanna call this professional campus PUD or whatever, but I mean, it has to be something different than what it was used for. I mean, I can't speak for Kurt, but-
You, you got three-point-eight acres or something there, and that's worth so much money? But the building is also worth eight thousand dollars a month to you, or whatever that is. So, yeah.
I mean, are they gonna wanna pay me, basically, you know, like, uh, on the tax roll, I'm over seven hundred thousand. Are they gonna wanna pay seven hundred thousand for three-point-eight acres of land? No. They're gonna say, "The hospital just got fifty acres for that type of money, or less than that." That's, that'd be my only concern, is that it's not worth anything anymore, and I get paid thirty thousand in acres, so I got four acres, so what did I get out of it? You know, a hundred and twenty thousand?
There is a lot of, isn't there a lot of tree line, Dave, between where the Mayo prop, property's gonna be and where this property is?
You can see that on that colored, um, where the trees are. Want me to sign my names?
Yes, I can't spell your last name. You can kind of see here, Leroy, while Randy's signing.
Right. Is that just kind of undergrowth, or is that actually some trees and tall stuff?
Tall.
Okay.
There's some pretty good healthy- There's some pretty good healthy trees in there.
What, and what kinda elevation difference, Randy, would you say from down here to the top, up in here?
Up in that corner, I would, my buildings are, the one's probably thirty feet tall, and I would say that's maybe fifty feet above the floor where the back corner is, that southeast corner is, I bet it's fifty feet higher. If you stand up there, you're looking at the roofs of those two buildings.
Okay.
And I'm paying about, um, well, plus assessments, but I think it's like twenty-six thousand a year in property taxes on that property right now.
Right.
So that's making it tough, and with the economy being bad, I haven't raised anybody's rates, and when, I was paying thirteen thousand five years ago, and now I'm up to twenty-six thousand.
Went up that much?
It's, it went up a hundred and thirteen percent in one year.
Kinda funny how...
Must have been when the, the water and sewer got annexed, I bet.
It was after that. It was something, they said that it was, like, they told everybody, it was one of the most under-evaluated properties in the area, and then I go talk to the next person, they told him the same thing. But it, I still have a copy of when it went up a hundred and thirteen percent in one year.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, and I haven't raised anybody's rates in that, and I, what I did is I moved out and moved to my house, and I moved out of my own shop because I couldn't afford it, so then I rented it out.
Yeah.
And like I say, I'm not against the hospital or anything. I just, I, I wanna kinda be assured that I can at least be paid fair market value for my property, because I can understand, they don't want trucks, and they don't want metal buildings there, but then the hospital should just buy us out is probably the right answer. If that's what they don't want, they should get rid of us. And I'm up for that too, but I know they are not, but...
Well, I'd rather have your tax base out there.
Yeah, that's what you had said earlier, the twenty-six thousand.
I guess we lose our tax base.
Right.
And we're trying to keep everything we kept.
So I mean, with the assessments, I'm paying a little over thirty thousand dollars on that building.
And what you pay for taxes, we really, I know they're miserable, but we really appreciate it. It helps our budget out every year.
Well, between the three properties I own, I, I pay, uh, seventy-six thousand dollars to the city of, well, I mean, in property taxes, the city and whatever, and, uh...
You know, as much as I'm excited about the hospital, and I know it's a great thing and all that, it also has no tax base for it. Uh, and that's the way it works with nonprofit. But, uh...
And I'm a little, you know, and like you said, well, maybe it can be a massage, whatever, you know, or different things like that, like they got going downtown. Well, they're used to paying four hundred dollars a month for their little corner in a storefront here in town. Are they gonna wanna move out there and start paying the new prices? Maybe, maybe a research facility, but I don't think, uh, some of these smaller, you know, eye clinics and stuff, that's gonna work, because then if they have to build buildings like the hospital and start paying taxes, it's gonna, it's gonna be tough.
Taxes grew up like that too, is that, uh, you know, they gotta do their thing, they, whatever it is, but it's like you say, they raise your taxes, and then you gotta pass it on, and that makes the rental higher, and all of a sudden, a four-hundred-dollar person that wants to move out here because the high-traffic area you own, it's twelve hundred bucks for what they got downtown, it doesn't work. So every time these tax things grow up, every time, uh, we do something like that, it affects everything. It makes everything go off. Uh, but it's, uh, so I, I don't know, Dave. I think, I've listened to the guys up here, I think I'm the only guy that's up here that's got reservations, but I got reservations about putting these three in there.
I don't think you're the only one, and, and I, I just wanna be clear too, that I'm not here representing the hospital. I actually, as I've worked through this, developed kinda this concept, and I did, in the last couple of weeks, talk with the hospital about this recommendation, and this is the direction that I was heading. Uh, but they're not here, and I wanna be clear to Randy, they're not here telling me that this is what we have to do, this is what we wanna do, and we have to have it this way, or we can't exist in this neighborhood. That's not what the hospital's telling me. So I just wanna make that point. And then just step back for just a minute, because again, I, I mean, my goal is not to discourage or dissuade development from occurring in this town. I actually work for the EDA too, um, and our goal is to expand the tax base, so I, I do factor that into these considerations as I come into the planning commission. But I just wanna be clear that if you look at the zoning ordinance, and, and this is within the memorandum that, uh, kinda describes this overall proposal, we're talking about medical facilities, ancillary and complementary uses as an example. Uh, if the hospital wanted to have a, a pharmacy in the hospital, they're probably gonna be allowed under this. That's an ancillary use for, for a hospital, uh, development. Office development is, is very broadly defined here. You know, it's fairly flexible, but again, if someone's gonna develop offices under this proposal, they do have to get a conditional use permit to do that. So the planning commission's gonna see the project, the council's gonna have to approve it for an office development. Research and development facilities, that's fairly broad, you know, category as well, and high-density, multiple-family residential developments. So I've tried, plus the exclusion of the sexually-oriented uses, I've tried to, with the sexually-oriented uses aside, try to be fairly general in terms of the land use, but trying to drive towards a, 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 a plan and a zoning ordinance that would not just accommodate the hospital, clearly they're gonna develop out there, but that would also allow others, Randy Retzickel's property included, to look at this and say, gee, maybe it's not this year, maybe it's not next year, maybe it's not five years, but as this community continues to grow and the interchange gets done and the hospital gets built there, there may be others that come and look at Randy's property or Grandpa's Garage, or even Steve Bauer's property, and say, you know what? This one, or two, or all three of these properties makes sense for me as a developer to develop something under this zone, and I'm gonna pay a decent price for these properties. Now, we're also on the Economic Development Authority side, beyond the industrial park. We're in communication with property owners out in this part of the community as well, and looking very closely at economic development opportunities for Cannon Falls in this area. And I've spoken with Bill and the EDA about, not relative to, to Randy's property specifically, but as we look up and down fifty-two, even if we do this, that doesn't address all of the little complications we've got up and down Highway fifty-two. It takes a little bitty neighborhood and, and, and takes a step forward, but there's certainly some other challenges that, that we're looking at out along that fifty-two corridor, opportunities for redevelopment even beyond this neighborhood, for redevelopment, new development, et cetera, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a much closer look at the Highway fifty-two corridor, in my opinion, with the EDA, uh, in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, beyond the work that we do in the industrial park. We see, as an EDA, we see all sorts of opportunities for repositioning, redeveloping, encouraging new development, working with the hospital, working with the Randy Retzickels. We, we see opportunities out there for that part of the community, and very honestly, the EDA has not looked at that area, well, certainly before I came here, I don't think. So that's kinda where we're headed on the EDA side, and all this stuff kinda fits together, at least in my view, uh, in, into this package, um, and, and I think it would, it creates some nice opportunity for this community near and long term. Are there questions with regards to what the market value's gonna be? Yeah. Are there questions about who's gonna come in next and buy my property if I'm Randy Retzickel, or if I'm Steve Bauer? Who's gonna come in, I wanna sell my property, who's gonna buy it now, who's gonna buy it next week, who's gonna buy it next year with this new zoning? Who's gonna buy it five years from now? And what are the, what am I gonna get paid? We can't anticipate that, we can't regulate that, we can't set our zoning to address that unless we're willing to not have zoning. And I don't think that's the choice that we've got at this point.
You know, I see as an example is, uh, within a couple of years, they could wanna run a McDonald's house out there or something for...
Yeah.
Uh, so what's gonna happen is, is Mayo Clinic gonna put that on their land? Or is that gonna be, somebody gonna wanna purchase that land, some nonprofit, and put it up on a separate piece of land? I would guess that Mayo Clinic is probably gonna put it right on their land. So some of this stuff, I don't know that it necessarily, I don't, I don't know what their thinking is on their land. If they're, if they're gonna wanna hospital, and then they're gonna wanna hearing center, they're gonna wanna an eye center, they're gonna put all that on their land, or they're gonna say, well, work with you, but buy private land around here outside of us. We don't want it on our land. And, and that can change everything. I mean, if, if they put it on their land, then basically you're taking away from our market value around here. If they say, all we want is a hospital on here, then that makes his property and everybody else worth more. If, if that was the case, Mayo Clinic come along and said, we're absolutely not gonna have anything but a hospital, and, and the whole, this land becomes, uh, what's around us is available for people to develop, wow, that, that really changes valuation of things. But if they decide to do it on their own campus, it does necessarily increase his property. Ain't gonna wanna welding shop in there with fans going, the smoke going out all the time, and the fumes coming up by the hospital. So I, I think in some ways it affects him. I don't, I don't quite have the answer.
And, and the hos- the hospital, um, you know, has the opportunity, like you, you said earlier, Leroy, if, you know, the other way to get at this is for the hospital to buy all the properties around them.
Yeah, and...
But that's not, but that's not feasible for them, and it's not something you're proposing to do, but in the scenario you mentioned, if there's a land use within this area that, that negatively affects the hospital, I'm not here to say that Mayo will or won't buy that property, but I would certainly expect they would look at it, which they could do.
And I've all four taken everything from the overpass north where the hospital is to, to make that a protective zone for, uh, future development or something like that. I'm just, I, I'm just not excited about locking these three property owners into that without the options.
Who've, who've been there for a while, you know?
Yeah.
It's like they were there before the stock of the hospital, and...
And, and with the overpass, how do I know that a, a car dealership doesn't wanna be there? Uh, how do I know that that's a bad thing if he bought all three things there and put a car dealership in there? Why is that a bad thing? I, I don't see anything wrong with it.
And, and we don't know, but I, what I would say to that potential buyer, because they will come and see the city, whether I'm here or someone else at that time, and, and talk about zoning, um, it's not to say that the hospital campus, PUD, or the medical campus, PUD, whatever it's called, uh, could not be amended later with a project of, of that type. It would have to be proposed, it would have to be amended, the ordinance could, could do that to accommodate that. And maybe that is a land use that comes in at that time that, that everyone looks at and says, you know what? That fits. The plan that they're proposing fits. It's just that their land use doesn't fit, so now we need to amend our planned unit development ordinance, and maybe we do it.
And, and if we, if we do go professional and say we went with a thing like Dave, and said this has to be some kind of professional area, um, are they gonna want some professional area with John Deere tractors right out the front window on the other side of the street?
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
Yeah. It's, it's an uncertain future, clearly, with regards to land use, zoning, markets, values, development. Um, but I think, again, to, to move us beyond this moratorium, I think we really need to take a serious look at, uh, at this recommendation, and I think limiting the opportunities for the sexually-oriented uses to relocate to in Cannon Falls is, is clearly important. This does that. I think we need to keep that in mind. Um...
I, I've got a question about that specifically, I guess. Even in like a B-two district, they can't just put it in. That has to be still approved with, like a permit of some sort.
They have to be licensed, yeah.
But...
But the zoning's not gonna preclude them.
Zoning wouldn't necessarily preclude it, but they still have to ask for permission for that kind of use, whether it's hospital, campus, or B-two. They still have to come before either the planning commission, or the city council, or somebody, don't they?
City council for licensing, yeah, but not for zoning. So we, we wouldn't see them here. I mean, wiping the slate clean, keeping it the way it is, forgetting about this right now that we're talking about tonight, um, they would be allowed to, to do that under the existing zoning, B-two. But there would be a licensing issue, but that's not gonna be the land use.
Uh, I'd like to tell Randy that I think he's wrong on the part that your buildings won't be worth anything, people won't pay for those. I, I'm saying they will, cause your property, your land out there is what's really, really gonna go up in the value if something like this happens out there. Might not be anytime soon, but I've seen so many pieces of property bought in perfectly good buildings, totally demolished, curb and gutter, and batuminus, the whole works went, and they started all over, paid millions of dollars for it, and just to get that property. And you've got some really good property there.
I'd be better off being Steve Bauer though, cause he has no expense in his land.
What's that?
I'd be better off to be Steve Bauer, cause he has no expense.
No.
Right, it's just, it's just the tax on the land, not the tax on the buildings too.
He had a half a million dollars invested in it. He's got thirty-five thousand invested in his.
Yeah, and I, and I realize that, but, but that's why I think, uh, like Bob here, that we, we need to do a little bit more to protect Randy's there. I don't worry about Steve Bauer's plain land there. He's got nothing to protect, far as I'm concerned, and maybe not even, uh, Loke's is, is certainly not, he doesn't have a going business there, but I think Randy's is something that needs to be protected there with a little more verbiage than what we have.
Well, Loke's got tax base there too with that building on there. So, uh, and, and, and I, I don't disagree with you at all that this land value shouldn't go up because of this, but I also have seen situations where, uh, it just, nothing happens. It might be fifteen years down the road, but it just sits there.
And, and I, I agree with that. That's why I think we need to protect Randy a little bit more, allowing him to do whatever it takes with his buildings he has for that time. The, the best example I'm gonna give you on, on property is where Advanced, I believe it's Advanced Auto Parts built where the restaurant was on, on Highway three in Northfield. And they had a really nice restaurant there. It was updated, well, we updated it a couple of times. It'd been updated once after I quit, and, and they tore that thing down, took parking lot, curb and gutter, and everything else. I mean, they weren't buying, they didn't care what they paid for that building, because they wanted the property. And I think you're in a position to be just like that, but it isn't gonna be soon.
I have time.
And, and again, just to, yeah, and to be clear, that, that there, there's no forcing through this process of a change of land use on Randy's land right now.
It, it, it will still, he'll have whatever options he has today, he will have as long as he owns it, correct?
Correct.
And if he sells it to somebody that wants to continue these same uses, they will have those privileges also, but they will not have the full range of the B-one, just the continuation of exactly what it is at this time.
The use, correct.
I guess the part that scares me a little bit is the part like we talked about, Loke's building there, he has been out of business, nobody's been in there for a year, and now we're saying maybe he can't do the same thing again.
Right.
Randy could be in the same position. I think he should have that option to do whatever he wants with that, even if it's been shut, or one of them builds, businesses, or both buildings are down for a year. I don't think that's gonna happen, but...
Well, and again, I, I would take the counterargument that if you look at a Grandpa's Garage, that's been vacant now for however long it's been vacant. Uh, the full zoning rights under the B-two were available for that the day it became vacant, and for at least a year after, and nothing happened. So our zoning didn't promote, it didn't restrict, it didn't dictate, it didn't do anything to change that particular use or that building or that property.
But the way it's owned right now, he could start that up again if he applied. Before, if we don't approve this...
Under, under the B-two, yes.
Yes.
Yep.
But if we approve this, then he's not gonna be able to...
Then the only way it could be approved is if this were amended.
Yes.
Yep.
You know, for the short term, meaning say the next five years, because I don't foresee a whole lot happening with either,
Yeah.
either property, wouldn't it be to the city's benefit to leave it a little broader scope? So that if somebody like Kurt, or say he sold it, or he got a tenant that wanted similar usage as what was previously there, maybe it's two years down the road, or next year somebody comes in, cause maybe everybody's sitting there with hands off, doing the wait and see what's gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it, that could very well be what's going on, is...
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's the city's benefit to exclude that out in the short term. Sure, maybe in fifteen years... Sure, maybe in fifteen years, we wanna get a little bit more restrictive once the hospital's there and up and running, but I don't personally, what, if the, until the hospital's there and up and running and we see what's actually gonna be there, I'm a little, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent for running, you know, shutting everything down. I, I think it's a good idea to have this proposal and a game plan as to what we're gonna do. But until we, some of those things, we're doing a well if or maybe here because nobody's ponied up yet and done anything. You know, everybody says they're going to, but we've been gonna change that highway since I graduated. And that was a long time ago.
We've had that conversation, yes, yeah.
On Monday afternoon.
I was a little concerned too, I guess, these guys that own property out there. I certainly can't blame anyone for wanting to take maybe some land that they own and try to generate some income off of that. And it, it almost seems wrong to, to tell them, well, you can as long as you follow this right here, then you're, then we're good. Otherwise, otherwise, you know, I'm sorry that, that guy that wants to come in and open up a, uh, auto shop or they're gonna work on cars, you know?
Yeah. But that's what zoning does. And, and we're gonna have zoning in the city and that's, that's just the, the harsh reality of zoning. It's a, it's a do and a don't kind of regulation. But I think we go back in time even long before I got here, when this whole area was annexed. And I've got questions about this now since with appraisals underway for property acquisition by the highway department to get this proj- project done. We've had questions about why, why is it that there's industrial zoning out in the highway commercial area? I wasn't here at the time, but I'm guessing it was because they were industrial uses when they were annexed to the city. And when the city did the rezoning in two thousand and six, they zoned based on use. So now we have some industrial, we have some urban expansion. We have a, a, a B two district that even though it, it allows a fair number of land uses, it doesn't necessarily allow all the existing uses. So we have non-conformings out there. We've got non-conformings, we've talked about it a lot around the residential business district. Um, you know, the, the zoning isn't a perfect solution, but I don't think it needs to be feared as much as what we're talking about here in these instances. Because again, if we're gonna have zoning, which we are, we're gonna allow things and we're gonna disallow things. And we're never gonna be able to predict with any accuracy what tomorrow or next week or next year is gonna bring in terms of property owner interest, developers' interest, et cetera. But our zoning's gonna dictate certain rights up till someone wants to do something on their property. That's, and if we're not gonna have zoning in the city, then we don't have this issue. Then people can do what they wanna do, where they wanna do it, how they wanna do it, when they wanna do it without any regulations, but that's not what we've got.
I have one more question on the hospital property. Now, Leroy was saying that we don't get any tax money off of that hospital once it's up and done and running?
Correct.
Is that true?
The, the hospital building.
Only, what, what about on the fifty acres or the property that they own excluding three properties that are not under their ownership yet? What if they build something else on there such as a pharmacy?
Yep.
Or a bio lab or some other, the city will not get any tax money off of that?
Not necessarily. If it's, if it's owned real estate but leased to a private party. If they lease you two thousand square feet for your pharmacy, you're a private owner, you're leasing space from a nonprofit, there's gonna be a tax liability because they're using nonprofit tax land, nonprofit land for private purpose or private benefit. So it's actually generating income, in this case to Mayo, uh, and there'll be a tax liability on that.
So if they did pick up one of those other three properties or all of them down the road, we would not lose the tax income off of that?
Oh, yeah.
If, we would possi- we possibly could, could use, yeah, could lose that.
See, they took and made one big parking lot for their hospital out of it. We'd be SOL.
Yes, yes. Let me, let me explain, cause this goes back to Leroy's point, but maybe your point too Dave, that what I anticipate is gonna happen. And I'm not here representing Mayo, but from the conversations that I've been involved with, what I anticipate's gonna happen is there'll be a request to annex this fourteen acres. Assumably the township will support that, the council will support that, it will be annexed into the city. There will now be fifty-one acres of Mayo-owned, tax-exempt property, okay? So now we've got one fifty-one acre parcel owned by, let's say Mayo, okay? What I anticipate that they're going to do is subdivide that fifty-one acres. They don't need fifty-one acres for the hospital, okay? But they're gonna have fifty-one acres. So what they've been talking about is coming in not just with the annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit to develop the hospital, but also coming in with a subdivision. I'm not sure what that subdivision's gonna look like yet, but to the extent it makes other parcels available for development by Mayo or sale to Randy to develop. We don't know what's gonna happen with that, but what we, what I do know is that fifty-one acres is not the land area needed for this hospital. They're building an eighty-eight, call it ninety thousand square foot hospital with quite a bit of parking on a fifty-one acre site. Now, not all that land is developable because of topography and other, other limitations, but a fair amount of that property of that fifty-one acres is developable. Is it gonna be sold off to, to private parties who develop an office building, a dental office, an eye clinic? Is it gonna be retained by Mayo leased to other medical professions? Is it gonna be something like happened in Northfield where the city-owned hospital has property next to them that Mayo has a cancer center facility located on that's operated by Mayo, I believe? I think it could be a combination of things. And where that leaves one or two or these three properties, I don't know. But what I do know is they're right next door to some pretty significant development. They're right next door to a nonprofit owner and developer of medical uses. Will they express an interest in one, two, or three of those properties in the future and redevelop them for their own purposes? Or redevelop them and make that property available for someone else who develops nonprofit or profit medical facilities there? Could be. I don't know that. And I'm not, I'm pretty sure Mayo doesn't know that.
I guess I'm not in favor of turning over a whole lot of property under the control of not getting any tax base off of it.
I got a suggestion Dave.
Yep.
I, I think this is al- also one way that the Mayo Clinic could go is that the Mayo Clinic is trying to get more of their established base into the Minneapolis Twin City market up there. And I can see Cannon Falls becoming a connection for that, where they start advertising, they at least get them down here this half an hour to Cannon Falls. Um, I can also see, um, that if that grows, that they will wanna put up some kind of a cancer treatment center someplace. If they do build that out there, they'll probably build it on their own land. And if they get the base down from the cities, this might be the area that, that ties them into Rochester or, or works that way. So I can see that happening. I can't see the Mayo Clinic being in the land development, where they sell a piece of land and they make some money and now they got nonprofit problems again. So I, I don't, and if they did lease it out to some pharmaceutical company, uh, I think the Mayo Clinic is gonna own it. And what, what he's saying is if they lease it to a pharmaceutical company, they came in and put it in a drugstore, then they gotta pay taxes on that building. But if Mayo Clinic owns that pharmaceutical, they don't. So that, that's what I, I see happening there, um, more so than, than leasing out or something like that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to comment is if, if you got enough votes here with these four, I'm supposed to be on a call at Core Day eight. So I got a couple more comments. If you've got enough here to vote, I gotta take off. Do we have enough with them four to?
Are, are we getting towards, I mean, you've got some questions and?
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add to it is, is I wanna stir this up a little bit tonight too and add a little excitement to it about the last, last act thing.
Don't you have to leave?
I think everybody's dodging the class act bullet and everybody's worried about them coming in the wrong place and, and all this stuff. And I understand that. But I also understand they have rights to that business. And, uh, yeah, we don't want it alongside a park with children in it. We don't want it here, the hospital. But they do have rights to have this and it's probably a thing they're gonna want a hospital or a highway location out there. I understand that. So I understand, uh, their position too. Uh, you don't have to like it. I, I can also say that we have, as, as much as people dislike that, we have less police problems with the class act than we do with any of our other bars in town. They're all worse. Our bars are worse for problems than class act. You could figure that out. So I don't wanna demonize them guys. I, I, I don't want it in town, but they have a right to it. It's part of the way things work. And I, yeah, I don't want it in the hospital zone, but I don't wanna run scared here because of them guys either. Um, but also for me, I, I don't wanna change the zoning on these three. If, if I'm voting on that, I would vote no tonight to change that. I'm also gonna say is that by us voting no could make his property worth a lot more. Because the Mayo Clinic might find out we didn't go along with that corner and they could come along tomorrow and say, you know what? We're gonna buy them three, cause we want this whole corner. So I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing not to tie them three in. And, but you've got enough here without me, right?
Yeah, four of them is four.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I gotta get going here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks guys.
Thanks Leroy. Well, what about, what about you guys? What are you guys thinking? I'm kinda with Leroy. I actually, I don't see a reason to switch those three properties. I, personally, I really don't believe that class act is gonna be like, hey, let's get right next to that Mayo building so that we can, you know, have a nice.
I'm heading out there right after the meeting.
If, if you're asking me on it, I don't see that the three, I, I think what he's doing is, is just protecting that area. I don't see the three being singled out and I don't see it being restrictive to them because if it changes hands, it's gonna come under some scrutiny anyway. Um, but, you know, I just, I don't see that, you know, in the overall picture, you know, it seems like, um, from what I'm hearing is that, that we're, again, even though you, you say that we're not doing this for Mayo, it, it, it gets that perception. Thank you. It gets the perception that this is why we're doing it and so the little guys in the corner shouldn't be touched. And I, I don't, I think the value of that property, whether it's zone this or not zone this, is gonna be based on what's happening around it.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's where I, I just don't think this is going to be the downfall of the property or the other direction on it. I mean, that's, that's just where I'm coming from on it.
My biggest concern is that Randy was there first.
Yeah.
We sucked him into the city.
Yep, yep. And, and doubled his taxes.
Hole to put him in and.
More than doubled his taxes.
Yeah, yeah. So we've already created enough.
Trying to push him out?
Theoretically, we've created problems for him.
Be careful. The city did not necessarily raise his taxes. They only adjusted his valuation.
But my concern is that we don't cut him off at the knees. We've already significantly messed with him and I, and from what Dave is telling me is he will reserve all his rights and everything, so.
But, but it is, at an as-is kinda state, making it more difficult if one of his tenants.
Anything that he wants under the B two.
Right.
As long as he owns it.
Right.
The way it stands, correct?
Moratorium aside, yes.
Moratorium aside, yeah. And it, I think is, I'm, I'm kinda torn between the two cause time is only gonna be the only determining factor on what happens, on whether it's worth more or worth less. I don't foresee it being worth any less by far. I think whether you rezonate or don't mess with it, I think the value is still gonna just keep right on chugging along at some point. He's, I, he's perfectly right on that his buildings throughout time are not gonna be worth ten cents. But Kurt, he's right, whoever comes in there and buys that piece or that corner or those three lots is gonna level everything and start over. Because the whole thing, the way it's organized and hodgepodge together, which we have that problem every place here in town, because we've let it go without any kind of boundaries on anything, does not fit for any, for anything other than just like it is right now. So I, you know, as long as we're not gonna mess with what Randy has going on, I think time is just gonna increase his property values.
But if we.
My concern is, you know, not creating more taxes for him, not losing our tax base in the interim because we voted for it or against it.
But if we vote for this, that B two thing goes out the window?
Only if.
Yeah, for that spot.
Fathered in, he, it would, the B two thing goes out the window. If somebody else buys it, then they only get what the use is at the time that they buy it, correct?
Yeah, and, and or seek an amendment to the zone.
Or if Randy loses one of his tenants, for whatever reason, he may have a harder time bringing in a new tenant because it might not fit in this.
Well, it, he'll, it would fit in under anything on the B two.
The use, yeah, the use, the use he will.
As long as he owns it.
As long as he owns it, he can still do that. So they're not, we're not restricting him in any way when it comes to that.
His use is gonna be based on what's there at the time of the new ordinance. So he's not gonna be able to, under this new ordinance, come in with the car dealer, cause they're not there now. He can continue to have what's there indefinitely.
Okay, say he has the trucking outfit. The trucking outfit pulls out of there.
And it's been vacant for a year.
Has a whole mess of vans.
Is it a similar use?
Similar use, only they, only they run some around in vans and.
Different name.
The paper shredding outfit comes in and wants to store their trucks in there and their paper shredding operation.
It, it's the use. So there's still gonna be a fairly broad use right, even though it's a different tenant. If it's a similar, if it's a similar use, it's really the land use that's regulating not. So if he's got, if he's got someone storing something out there and it's widgets and they leave and someone comes in and wants to store paper, storage is the use. It's not the widgets. It's not the paper, it's storage.
But I can't switch to retailers, something like that.
No, right, right.
Which is a law under the B two.
Which would be, yeah.
That would actually be a really great use for that property. When I look at that, I look at those three properties and I think, wow, look at that, there could be an Arby's and a Burger King and.
Not so much once the interchange is in.
Right? Well, no, it's, it'd be a great spot, wouldn't it?
No, cause once the interchange is in.
There's no exit there. It's further south.
You gotta go around and come back. Cause that, that crossing there will not be there once the interchange is in.
Right. Was there a plan though to bring twenty-four back through?
No.
To, there isn't.
The bridge is extension.
It's gonna just be a dead end there.
You gotta spare a couple hundred million dollars.
Till twenty nineteen if we're lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the twenty nineteen is the date being discussed for the overpass.
And I, I have the same concerns with, with Loke's.
Oh, that's only eight years.
I think there's a wait and see process going on with what Kurt has there for Loke's stuff.
I, like I say, and I understand the concerns, I mean, I do. I don't own the property, so maybe I can say I'm not as concerned as the property owners. But I think in the, in, in the grand scheme of things, uh, I wouldn't be here proposing this tonight if I really honestly felt that it was a negative recommendation in a, in a big way to any one or all three of these properties. I really don't see it. Is it a change? Yeah. But, you know, like we've talked before, that, that whole B two area, um.
It's not gonna. It's not gonna affect our tax base for the next five years, correct?
No, no, no. And again, I, I don't know what Mayo's gonna do beyond the hospital. They may not know what they're gonna do beyond the hospital. But I think as Leroy said, our location relative to the Twin Cities and Rochester isn't changing, no matter what we do here. What is gonna change is the interchange in the hospital. And that's gonna bring new opportunities to this community and I think to target those opportunities in, in a way that enhances the probability of development occurring is a good strategy. And I really believe that for, for these three properties, in addition to the, to the hospital site. But we need to get beyond the moratorium. We need to get through the moratorium. We need to resolve, um, the ordinance that established the moratorium.
We deleted the moratorium yesterday.
And, and I think in terms of, of, of addressing at least one of the issues under the moratorium, which is the sexually oriented uses, as Leroy said, we are not excluding them from developing somewhere else in the community except this area. That's the only exception to them. So they'll have all sorts of opportunities to relocate up and down the Highway fifty-two corridor if they choose to do that, beyond what we're talking about here.
City limits, we have a certain amount of control over where they would go though.
Yeah. Really, the B two area is the area that, that if they're gonna relocate in Cannon Falls, they really need to look at.
And they go out to the industrial park?
No.
Out of sight, out of mind.
In two thousand and six, the city council, council made the decision not to direct that use to that location. Which is partly why we're in a moratorium. So again, I mean, I understand the concerns. I understand Randy's concerns. Um, but I think as I look at all the options that we've talked about, presenting to the planning commission, including conversations with the city attorney, this seems to be the one that offers maybe the, the, the most benefits to the community. Uh, it allows us to move beyond the moratorium. Um, I guess if we need to do something with those three property owners in terms of maybe providing some type of written documentation from the city administrator relative to, you know, the conclusions here, if we're going in this direction, to give them something at least to hold on to, we can certainly do that. I think to, to leave those three properties as a B two zone, um, i- is not something that we should do at this point. I really don't.
I mean, that brings up the use of the manufacturing across the highway. I mean, if we start doing these pieces like this, it's just like what we did back then.
Yeah, and, like you say, I'm not a huge advocate again of the B two in its entirety up and down the corridor, going from the mall all the way south in the community. I mean, there, we don't need to talk about it at great length, but, but even beyond this sixty acres that we're talking about tonight and beyond the moratorium, there's, there's other areas there that we could have conversations about in terms of plans for future land use, zoning for future land use, doing things that hopefully organize and make things fit a little bit better than what they fit right now. It's, it's not a perfect pattern of land use development that exists out in the B two corridor right now. And there's certainly some changes that will occur as a result of the interchange, the hospital and other developments that will occur out there.
I guess we've got a couple people here from the, what's the, the council and the EDA, what's their thoughts? That this has gotta be already run past them, right?
Um, not, not.
EDAs?
No, E, EDA's had some conversations about this. It's on their agenda tomorrow morning. This specific information's on their agenda. But we have been talking about the fifty-two corridor for the better part of this year, maybe even starting last year. Um, it, it seems like we'll be making a pretty significant land sale here out in the industrial park before the end of the year. Um, that's on the agenda tomorrow. And to the extent that that happens, we're not abandoning the, the industrial park, but in terms of our real estate holdings as an EDA, we'll be down to a couple of small parcels in the industrial park. So we began even probably two thousand and eleven, I've got two members here tonight, that we started talking about future economic development of the community outside of the industrial park and zeroed in on the, on the fifty-two corridor. I've had conversations with Mayo about, about their plans. As Leroy said, they're not real estate developers, but yet they develop real estate. But they do it for their own purposes as a medical institution. I'm not so sure that the EDA won't develop some type of relationship with Mayo and their real estate holdings on the fifty-two corridor. I think that's, I think that's a distinct possibility. And I think when it comes to redeveloping those three parcels, I, I can't speak for the EDA without a specific project proposal before us, but I wouldn't be surprised if someone came to us and said, you know what? We wanna buy these three properties. We wanna develop this, this use on this site. It's consistent with this zone and we'd like to work with the EDA to help facilitate the economic feasibility of that. And I'm thinking we'd probably do it.
And the township with the additional acreage to the back, you're not anticipating any flack from the township?
Here?
Correct, yeah.
You know, I'm not. There, we have a town board member that sits on the planning committee with the Highway fifty-two project, very familiar with what's going on, um, even with the, with the election, with the change, with the, with the new representative. I, I anticipate that the township's gonna be supportive of the annexation of that fourteen acres. I, I would be shocked if they weren't. But they haven't been asked to make that formal recommendation yet. So I'm expecting that will come in. But the balance of this property, as we spoke before, and you can look on the map behind us, but, you know, that southeast collector, um, is coming way out here, up to twenty-five. The west baggage road is over in, in this location. Those are properties outside of the city of Cannon Falls and we're not proposing to annex them at this point. The township has asked us not to do that. We learned that through this moratorium planning process. So most of the roads outside of the fifty-two por- portion, most of the roads that are being built to connect to this interchange are being built in the township and we're not proposing to annex those.
And they, those will not have sewer and water. They'll just be gravel paved, whatever.
Be paved roads, yeah, paved roads, yeah, yeah.
And there'll be more access to what, to get to what's already there by what's cut off.
Yeah, yep, yep. They'll be, they'll all be connected, yep, yep. So, like I say, I, this, this Highway fifty-two project is, is gonna have some major changes to this community. It's affecting the township now in a way that they've never been affected before. We're not annexing. We're not extending utilities out there. It's a lot of money to, to serve all this additional land with utilities and we're not proposing to do it.
Where are we gonna get the money to do it?
Randy? Randy? Oh, you're still, I thought you left.
Public Works looked at some of that extension of water and sewer and it was gonna be unbelievably costly, so it, it doesn't benefit us to do any annexation unless requested.
I think, and again, depending on which, which segments, which sections, which areas, but I think if we did the whole thing, it was bumping up close to two million. Just for utilities. And.
When was the hos- that hospital property that they own now, when was that annexed? 'Cause I never heard of that. 'Cause when I built.
This, this piece?
Just, just that piece.
There was, there, I know there was even confusion when I came in the fall of oh-eight about whether that was in or out. And so I ended up communicating with the county and they confirmed that both parcels have been annexed, but I guess they don't have the date. So, but, yeah, yeah, they're both in the city, or those two.
They don't let, they don't let neighboring property owners know when it's annexed?
Well, was it part of the whole, when we were all annexed?
No.
It wasn't?
Yeah, I don't know if it would've been separate from that or what I.
Two-year, it seems to me it was two years after that. 'Cause the college city was in here looking to have some of their stuff hooked up and asking some questions right about the same time. And I, I believe that was like two years after the, everything else. It was right, like my first, I think the first year, two, two thousand and five or something.
Okay.
Or late in oh-four.
'Cause I've been asked that question. I said, well, I didn't know it was ever annexed. 'Cause when I built, I had to be fifty feet away because I was putting commercial property next to ag land. So I had to be fifty feet from the property line, otherwise it only had to be ten feet or something.
I, I'm not sure other than.
It don't matter.
Yeah. So I guess that's where we're, where we're at, um.
You feel fairly sure that all of Randy's rights will be?
Yeah, I'd like.
In a way that later, later on down the road, none of us are here and he still owns the property, then they, they can't cut him off at the knees, right?
I, I'm willing, and not just for Randy, but I think for all three property owners, is, is, is if this goes forward, uh, into law through the council process, that, um, we write something from the city of Cannon Falls to give to these three to kinda lay out something in writing in terms of what we've talked about here, so they at least have that. Um, that's something we can do. I think to, to do any more than that, um, is, is difficult under zoning because the regulations are such that they're gonna supersede whatever we write in, in written form, but.
And also even if this goes through, there's still that extra step that they can take to do something else there by amending what you might be putting forward tonight. So there's just that extra hoop to jump.
Yeah.
Yeah, that may not be an easy hoop to jump through though, Bill. And Randy's already taken it, I can think of probably a couple times already. And if we leave him sitting there, I, you know, I, it is three different pieces of property, but that parking lot where they store machinery on, I mean, there's not a lot of income lost there if, if that gets taken away. And Kurt Lupki's building's been empty for a while anyway, so he's isn't getting anything out of it except an auction here and there. But Randy's, this is part of his financial living.
Yep. I, I agree.
But even, even the other gentleman owns, uh, grandpa's garage, boy, it's, yeah, it'd be kinda tough to have to pay those kinds of taxes on that property, I would think. So I just, I don't know that I'd, that we should tie his hands.
The, the taxes won't change going forward unless there's adjustments by Goodyear County in market value for any one of these three. Because the zoning itself isn't gonna change anything really in terms of values. The county will continue to value this based on their use, so.
An empty building doesn't go up in tax value?
Yeah.
Well, but I'm sure we aren't reducing his taxes 'cause he's not getting income off that property right now either.
I mean, the, the only way.
All I'm saying is I don't know that we wanna tie his hands by now, you know, there hasn't been anything in there for a period of time. So I guess that means that that poor guy, boy, he'd fall straight in the middle of this thing right here, wouldn't he?
And see, I would argue that because it has been vacant for so, so long, the experience would show me that the B two isn't doing anything for him anyway. So we'd probably do him a favor by changing it. Seriously, I mean, I, there's been plenty of opportunity under the B two zone. That building's been vacant for quite some time and it's still vacant under the B two zoning. So I, again, I, 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 I think we can't overestimate the influence of the zoning, but I am sympathetic to the existing uses and allowing that to continue under non-conforming provisions of our code. I think that's fair. I think that's reasonable. If we didn't have that, I wouldn't be up here supporting this. I would've tried a different approach. 'Cause that, that really does cut into the fairness. So if we were, if we were rezoning something, uh, to, to a use that wouldn't allow any flexibility, wouldn't allow any reasonable use to come into these properties, these three that we're talking about, uh, I think that would be unfair and unreasonable. But I think in this circumstance, since we're not gonna change what's there, and.
That with the people that are here and on the council, say if Kurt Lupki wanted to come in with something, I think everybody would sit down and take a look at it and be supportive to get a clientele in there to make it more profitable for him and possibly increase the tax base for the city too. I don't think that any, that even though we change this, I don't think anybody sitting up here would willingly tell him no right up front. And I hope that city staff wouldn't do that when he came in to ask.
Yeah. You're not an unreasonable bunch. We haven't been unreasonable administrators of the code. Uh, our goal continues to be trying to get things done rather than prevent things from happening. But again, zoning's a little bit tough 'cause there have been products where, where I've had to say no. No means no, a thousand times no. Uh, because the, the use being proposed by a property owner was simply to their economic advantage to get someone, some operating business in their building so they could lease it and make a buck, but it didn't fit. And it really didn't fit. And I've had several cases, not a bunch, but a few, where we've said no. But the choices are, you can ask for rezoning. You know, we, we've, we've had Ed Reimer come in and talk to us about wanting to build the, the storage facilities up, up the mall. He may still do that.
Cooperative.
He may still do that. We're still in communication, but he hasn't come forward yet. But we didn't say, you know what? You're not allowed to do that there. You're never gonna be allowed to do that there. Go away. Come back with an idea that we feel fits better. We said, okay, we're willing to work with you on that. And he will probably come forward with a request to do that. So it's not an unreasonable group. You haven't been that, nor has the council. But again, zoning's tough because we can't, if we're gonna have zoning, we're gonna have situations that don't fit. And that's just the way it is. And sometimes that's a good thing.
I think it is a good thing. I think here we're, we're into a little different area with these three property pieces, especially Randy's. I also don't think Lupki's in any physical condition to come in and talk to anybody.
Yeah, that's what I heard, so. I don't know if his son is taking care of stuff for him now or.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I know my dad hasn't said anything lately, so.
I should say too, before it's too late, this is a public hearing. I don't know if Roxanne wanted to, or if Randy had anything more to, okay. Don't wanna not allow you to speak if, okay.
Well.
'Cause I'm having too much fun up here myself.
Is it a must that we? Is it a must that if we, us four have to vote on this tonight? Can we, can we see what you can write up to, uh, before we make up our minds on this for, for Randy, say? Actually, for all of them, if that's the way you wanna word it?
Yeah, I'm not so sure that we wanna leave Kurt or Bowers out of it.
Yeah.
You know, the parking, the parking lot with the equipment sitting on it, I, I can only see it benefiting him a hundred percent, but the, the existing buildings, I'm, have a little bit of concern on that. But if I'm assured that they preserve all their rights, I guess.
I guess, in, in the interest of, of moving the moratorium process along, um, if you make the recommendation, I will sit down between now and the council meeting next Tuesday. I don't know that we will write a letter and, and have it completed by next Tuesday. But if you're gonna make the recommendation, council has to meet twice on this. It's an ordinance. So if you wanna make a recommendation that if you wanna go ahead as, as, as included in the resolution, but subject to putting something together in writing, make that recommendation. I'll work on it. I can certainly share it with you folks, um.
Does the attorney have to take a look at that then too, since the city staff is?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to Roger Knudsen on that just because, again, that's a critical piece in terms of pulling this whole puzzle together. So I would communicate with him, make sure that what we write, uh, is, is defensible legally and within our rights to do that. But, uh, we can do that. And like I say, I think it's a good faith effort. If we're gonna have zoning, it's a good faith effort, I think, that we can make for three existing property owners, um, that have developed property that would fall within that.
Anyway, is basically what it's gonna, that, that's all the further you can go with it.
And I, and I, I have done this before. Trying to think, I've done it in Cannon Falls since I've been here, but in, in, in past working situations, I have done this. I've been s- sitting at enough council meetings outside of this community to see other property owners who have come in and said, well, look, in, in nineteen eighty-five, this is what the situation was and here's what the city told me. And that's very helpful to have. I have a lot of people in Cannon Falls telling me, well, five years ago, can you show me something? Well, no, but I know it. Well, you know, if, if someone has something to show that, that does, does mean something, uh, and, and I'm certainly willing to work on something like that. But I think leaving those three properties B two, I will come to the city council. You, you can make that recommendation, but, but I'm sure the city attorney and myself will recommend to the council that we not leave those properties B two. If that's the direction the planning commission wants to take, we'll probably try to find some other alternative. We, we don't wanna leave those B two.
What would be the other option? Forum say that everything goes awry? Not that I'm leaning one way or the other. Not that I'm leaning one way or the other, but what would be a zoning option for those three properties other than B two?
It becomes a little bit more of a problem because now we're back to the industrial zones across the street and the spot zoning issue, so it becomes a little bit more problematic. I don't know if we have to go, I haven't thought about it David, but we maybe have to go back into the B two somehow and parcel some things. I'm not sure what we would do. But it becomes a little bit more of an island zoning then if we do it that way. And I, I don't think that's as good a solution. I'd rather roll the dice and, and take my chances that if we do something now and it affects Randy's property in a way that one year, two years, three years, five years, ten years down the road, it's a problem for him as a property owner, that we've addressed it now up front with him. So he has something and he's got the right to come in and propose to change it. I don't know who the staff will be, I don't know who the planning commission will be, I don't know who the council will be. He doesn't either, but that right is always gonna be there. Would he get, would he propose at that point? Who knows?
That seems fair to me, I guess. I, there's, I hate not, I don't like the way the city is where all the hodgepodge stuff is. And that, you know, this, what's over on the north side here is a conglomeration of a mess. You're never gonna straighten it out. We have quite a bit of bare land out there and there's no point of starting off out the gate, having it all hodgepodge together either. But at the same token, I don't want to put those three property owners in a bad spot for the future. I don't necessarily believe that they're gonna be in a bad spot in the future, but it's our job up here to watch out for their interests also. That's why we volunteer to do this.
And I, and I'll tell you too, for what it's worth, that, that the council did authorize at the last meeting us to move forward with some assistance on rewriting our zoning ordinance and our zoning map. So that's now really gonna get done. We don't have to start it and stop it, start it, stop it. So I'm expecting over the next several months that we're gonna get now back into rewriting the zoning ordinance and zoning map. And, and clearly, you know and I know, we're gonna run into situations like this in other parts of town. It's just the way it is. And how we get through them, I'm not entirely sure yet. But I, but I do see this as addressing a couple of problems. Does it fix all of them? No. Does it address many of them? Yes. Are we gonna do this throughout the B two zone? No. It would not, at least you won't get a recommendation from me. You would not see me coming in, let's, let's put this medical campus PUD, hospital campus PUD, professional office PUD, whatever we want to call it. Let's rezone all the existing B two to that. That would not make sense to me. Now, I don't know what we're gonna find when we actually get into really looking at the rest of the B two area, but we may very well find that the current B two is gonna change in a significant way and maybe even some of these properties are rezoned. And we're gonna have a lot more people out here.
Well, we haven't talked about it, but what if somebody came in and wanted a Walmart sitting on Kurt's property? Right? What, what would you do right now? Or say that they wanted to put it where the rental property is, they're just to the south?
That's out of the city. I mean, Lupki's property wouldn't be big enough, but, I mean, if we had, well, that's a bad example. Because of, because of the topography and the, and the acreage. But I get your point.
Right.
I mean, it's, it, it, it's gonna get down to the point where now, because all this property is part of the city and we're gonna have zoning, we're gonna have those decisions to make. Before, when this area developed, I don't think those decisions had to be made. If you had property and wanted to develop it, you did. Well, now it's part of the city. And we get to have meetings like this.
And across the road over there where the power center, power sports center where they're doing their stuff, I mean, that burned up a lot of city hours that somebody around here's gotta pay for.
Yeah, it's.
I, I'm not so sure that's how I want my tax money being spent all the time.
You may hear me next year saying that the residential business district is my favorite district.
Well, can I make a motion then that we approve the resolution with the documentation? Yeah, that, that is being requested by the other members?
We, I think officially we just have to close the public hearing portion first. So at this time, I'd like to close the public hearing for the comprehensive plan rezoning property. And that brings us to number seven, which is discussion items. And, and yeah, at that, at that time, you could do that.
I would, I would like to propose that we, or move that we approve the resolution with the requested documentation or letters for the three properties involved.
To ensure their usage, the intent of the planning commission at this date and time?
Have you had a motion by Longton? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have you had a motion by Longton and a second by Price? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Well, I think that's you, Bill. Right?
I suppose technically with Leroy. You're the alternate.
No pressure.
I, I would vote to move it along.
Motion carries. That brings us to, uh, number eight.
I forgot to move you up there, I should've done.
That brings us to number eight, which is planning commission member comments. Do we have any? Anything that wasn't on?
I got my answers to my one comment, and that was handsome property, so.
Well, I, I guess now that I'm involved, uh, the only comment I would make would be in regard to the subject matter we went over tonight is, is calling it something other than the hospital. Thing, let's change it to something else, because you're right, public perception is always.
Okay?
Yes.
Could call it the professional park or something.
Professional campus PUD or whatever.
Yeah.
You want naming rights?
I think that's only fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was the one of the three that is here, so. So it's up to you, what would you like it to be called? Was there any other comments from the planning commission members? All right, at that, this point, it brings us to the last and final item on the agenda, which is adjourned.
I so.
I've got a motion by Duden.
I second.
And a second by Longton. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes the Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, planning commission meeting.